I would entertain a motion to convene in closed session to discuss the following. No, excuse me, excuse me, one minute. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the closed session and reconvene in open session.
Second.
Discussion. We are now in open session. I would entertain a motion to certify the closed session by affirming that while in closed session, there was no formal action taken and then only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed and only public business matters identified in the motions convened in closed session were heard discussed or considered. I would entertain a motion to certify this.
Second.
Roll call. First one.
Louis Faginston?
Yes.
Ashley Hardy?
Yes.
Honeycock?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
We're now in open session, closed session, adjourned. Okay, council, you've got about three minutes. You can start, try to start on time. Thank you. It's two minutes after seven. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the normal scheduled meeting for the South Hill Town Council for Monday, September the ninth. Shall we pray? Our most gracious heavenly Father, you indeed again have given us a beautiful day, dear heavenly Father, and we, as we look around, dear heavenly Father, we see the truly, the many blessings that we have individually, as a country, and as citizens of this town. Dear heavenly Fathers, we go forward tonight and into the future, may we always have in the back of our mind your will and your wishes as you would have us deemed to do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Shall we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Louis Faginston?
Here.
Ashley Hardy?
Here.
Gavin Honeycock?
Present.
Lisa Jordan?
Here.
Dolores Lester?
Here.
Mike Moody?
Here.
Michael Smith?
Here.
Joseph Taylor?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, you have in front of you agenda. I would like to make an addition. I would like to add Mr. Spencer Crowder to speak, to address counsel from the IDA in addition to the agenda you have in front of him.
Mayor Marion, I would like to make a motion that we adopt tonight's agenda along with the added motion.
Okay, thank you.
With Mr. Spencer.
Okay, discussion. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Spencer, I'll let you go first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, citizens and guests. My name is Spencer Crowder and I am currently the Chair of the South Hill Industrial Development Authority. At our meeting Friday, we adopted the following resolution. It's a short one. If you indulge me, I'll read it to you. Whereas the Industrial Development Authority of the Town of South Hill has been established to promote and support the industrial and commercial interests of the town, and whereas said authority has enjoyed a continual and successful relationship with the Office of Business Development of the Town of South Hill, and whereas no such other government agency solely focusing on the commercial and business interests of the Town of South Hill currently exists, and whereas the South Hill IDA is currently engaged with said agency in a specific development opportunity, now therefore be it resolved that this Board of Directors of the South Hill Industrial Development Authority at a call meeting on September the sixth, 2024, hereby urges the Town, the South Hill Town Council to restore funding for the Office of Business Development or its successor with a similar function. Be it further resolved that this resolution be presented to the Town of, Town of South Hill Council at its regular meeting on September the ninth, 2024. And if I could just add a couple of things, the board went to great lengths to be clear that this resolution has nothing to do with personnel or personalities, but rather a position about which we feel very strongly. As in the past, we stand ready and willing to work with any hire or appointee that the town manager should make. And the last thing I want to add is that this vote was unanimous. I will leave this copy of the resolution with your clerk, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I will go in order of the sign up sheet. Mr. Mike Luddy, if you would come to the microphone, state your name.
My name is Mike Luddy, that's L-U-D-D-Y.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I own four properties in South Hill. Three are on West Danville. One is on West Virginia. That's a historic house, it's 98 years old. Three of the four properties were long-term vacancies, and if you've driven from the stoplight up towards the exchange, you'll notice on the right-hand side largely vacant and closed businesses. I only saw one that actually had a storefront with lights on. I hope you'll take a picture of the attachments that I gave you, before and after pictures of some of my properties. 617 was a very difficult property. The building was open to the air. It required extensive work to the back interior roof before I could close it in and get rid of the mildew. In late June of last year, I pulled a business, I mean a building permit, which I have attached on the cover sheet. When I pulled off the facade on the front, I realized the right-hand facing wall was just about nonexistent, so we ripped that down, hauled off the debris, we built a new wall, added a garage door, dried it all in. We had it all tieback before winter, that's that house rap. I did not work on the building through the winter. I feed cows every day in the winter. Restarted work in April. I finished in a total of 13 months. As I understand, the building permits are at least a year longer if you continue the work. You know, owning property in South Hill can be a challenge. In mid-July, I discovered that Dominion Power put a pole right through my sewer line, but not in front of my building, two businesses up. So at 613, they put a pole through the 625 building sewer. Neither the town nor Dominion took responsibility for that. They said it was mine even though it was in my neighbor's driveway, two businesses up. So I rented a concrete saw, used an excavator, dug it up, excavated it, repaired the sewer myself, put it all back. We were without sewer for three weeks during that period of time. I wish I could say that was my worst experience. In, in mid-August, I got this notice on my door. Said to call the Sheriff's Department. I called them, they said had two outstanding criminal warrants. I should report to the South Hill Police Department, a deputy would come and see me. I sat there for some time, they said the deputy was off that day. They advised me to drive to Boynton, I did that. They pulled a deputy off of an active larceny case to serve me, and I found out it was a criminal charge from the South Hill Building Code Department. I hadn't even had a traffic offense in the last 25 years, now I'm a criminal. That's not something that gets removed. Oh, I'm done. If I could just ask, just ask one question. What message does that send to those that might have an interest in the vacant properties in South Hill? Thank you for your time.
Question, question. We're correct.
Ms. Ricks, do we have, I hadn't, I didn't look in, well, I've looked at, updated, have we got an updated, dilapidated property list? Okay, can you provide that to council? Or is that in our packet? Oh, it's in the packet.
Yes, sir.
I didn't see it. And yes, Ms. Ricks, everybody should be held to the same standard, and I know you echo that opinion, but I will say that I called Robert about two houses that people were living in late at night, and the town addressed those and went and boarded them up because it was a safety issue, the neighbors had complained. So just kudos, Ms. Ricks, to your staff for taking that and doing that.
Kevin, is this something that you could check into to get some more information and get back in touch with Mr. Luddy and let him know exactly what you had found out?
Of course.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, but I concur with.
Okay. All right. Okay.
My name is Wade Crowder. I'd like to thank police force, the fire department, the rescue and the town workers. They do good jobs. They have to put up with a lot too. All right, in the last year, we've had, in this office up here, three employees to leave. We have one that stayed here for 22 years, she left. Then we have one that was here for nine years, he left. Then we have one that's here about a year, she left. I'd like to know, and the people out there in the crowd like to know, what's going on up here at the town office? You can't keep employees, it's a big rigmarole all the time, and people thinks it's Keystone Cops run this place. I agree with them, Keystone Cops, they don't do quite that bad. The citizens like to know who is suing the town. I heard that one of the town workers was suing the town. Now, that's just what I hear, so I can't go no farther than that on that. Over on Main Street, at the doughnut shop, we got a hydrant laying on the ground, it's been there for a month. What happens if the tire place catch on fire and that burns down to the ground because we don't have no water at that hydrant? The hydrant can be fixed the next day or the day after. They don't have to lay on the ground all this time. Last month, after the town council meeting, I come up here Tuesday morning, what, and talked to, asked the girl at the front office something, at the front desk, Lord, he come down the hall with somebody to attack me. He attacked me, he criticized me, he done everything to belittle me, and he was just employee, and that's what I was talking about, it wasn't even his department. What was done, doggone if I know, if it's the same thing was done to him as was to the last two that was the year before, they probably gave him a raise. Now, he moves to South Hill, he gets these old rundown properties and he does the best he can to fix them. I wouldn't have never took a bite out of them, and what y'all would have had was a pile of trash right there. He gets them, he fixes the best he can, and he rents them out or he uses them. He helps the AA. How many people in South Hill helps the AA? Zero. And we got a lot of alcoholics up here probably. I said probably. But didn't serve him with papers, something's wrong with this town. And then we got, I heard today, I ain't got the name yet, little old lady, eighty-seven years old, is being sued for $250 a month because her house needs to be painted. She's poor. Now, if you can do, put a $2 million water line in for a certain person in town, you can go over there and paint her house. And not sir for eighty-seven years old, she don't need to be aggravated with this stuff. Thank y'all.
Thanks, Kevin. Mr. Duffer.
Good evening, Paul Duffer. Like Mr. Luddy, I was dumb enough to be running three businesses at one time. I don't think Mr. Luddy's offended because he and I've been friends a long time. I just want to say that I'm proud of you for getting out here on time. That's the first time I've seen that. And I want to, the mayor knows me quite well, and I just want to say that I had a discussion with him. I contracted pancreatic cancer. They told me I was gonna die, refused to die, but he knows what I went through with people getting in, the members of the town offices here, telling everybody we gotta revitalize downtown. And for five years, they kept lost treasures of my building, which is now lost treasures, closed. And I can't prove that that man up there had something to do with getting it open, but he and I had a discussion, and I told him that if I hadn't had that cancer and they told me I had five and a half months to live, I would have been running for mayor. And I think that's enough, white people, black people, all kinds of people in South Hill know that I am a legitimate person, I don't lie to them, don't screw them out of everything. And I had a conversation with him, he can discuss anything I said with any of you people. It is tough. Mike Luddy is working his head off, I got a, I think $2,500 a day fine coming to me, $2,500 a day, because I haven't done, we, we are not, you can't find help, the ones you hire ain't worth a tooth. I don't know how many people up there run three businesses a day, but anyway, I, I don't know, I take up, but this guy, that guy, we work. I don't know if it's anybody up there that works as hard as we do. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Paul. Public hearing, Kevin.
Good evening. A notice of public hearing was published in the August 28th edition of the local newspaper to inform interested parties that town council will hear comments regarding the disposition of real property. Specifically, the town is considering conveying the parking spaces in Lee's Court subdivision to the Lee's Court Homeowners Association. Unless there are any questions, I will open the public hearing for comments.
Wade Crowder, I'm the one that done all the griping about it, just shouldn't have never took the responsibility of parking places on private property to blacktop. Spent over $60,000 to beautify the parking places where they parked. I'm glad y'all turned it back over to Lee's Court because I'd hate to think, if my grandchildren stayed here, that they would be responsible for it in another 20 years, and if they had kids, they'd be responsible. Would be the whole Crowder ancestors, far as they go, be responsible for Lee's Court. I'm glad y'all are changing it to Lee's Court. Now, they got a no parking sign up on, at the road, they need to take that no parking sign down, because you can still park there now on the street. So that needs to come down, that's illegal.
Yeah, you know, Wade was belittled here by Mr. Taylor about the Lee's Court ordeal, and called him by name, like I called Mike Luddy by name. And I don't know if it embarrassed Wade or not, but it embarrassed me that, I didn't think we were supposed to do that, but I may be wrong. But it's amazing. I went with Wade over there to look at Lee's Court, and you got buildings on both sides, and you got all that land in between with his parking lots. How did, how was that lands divided? Did the town own that piece of land and whoever built there? And I know who built them, but anyway, on each side? It didn't make any sense when it was stole. But if anybody deserves an apology, this man, because automatically it's been turned back over to those people. Now, you gotta be real dumb to realize something ain't going on. And I don't think y'all were alive, I don't know. I was alive, but we need to use some common sense up there and out here. South Hill is a great place to live, it's got good business people, they work hard, but something ain't right. They're, y'all are picking at each other, one, I want to get rid of Gavin this week and Mr. Taylor the next, and Mr. Smith, I think is his name, I don't know. But y'all need to work for South Hill's people, not each other, and work together. Wade and I work together, he and I have worked together. I don't, it, it, it's not hard to do. If I have a disagreement with Wade, we have a discussion, not a fight. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
All right, if there are no other comments, the public hearing is now closed, and council, no action is necessary tonight. The deed and revised plat will be presented to town council for approval at your regular October meeting next month, to be held on October 21st.
Thank you.
Under administrative reports, I would ask the council to make a motion to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay. On items for approval, Kevin?
Yes, sir, and bear with me, I have four reports this evening. The first up is financial policy adoption. Staff has worked with Davenport and Company to finalize the financial policy. The draft was presented to council at their regular July meeting, and a detailed overview was also provided at the work session held in August. The policy works as a guide as it relates to several financial initiatives to include, but not limited to, the issuance of debt, investments and fund balance classifications. The recommended motion tonight is to adopt the financial policy as presented and included in your packets this evening, effective immediately.
I move to adopt the financial policy as presented, effective immediately. Second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Next I have for you the HVAC maintenance and service contract renewal. Town staff solicited proposals from qualified offers to provide heating, ventilating and air conditioning, or HVAC preventative maintenance and service to include on-call emergency and non-emergency repair at five locations within the town. The deadline for submitting proposals was 2:00 PM on Wednesday, the 21st of August, and the town received two proposals from Comfort Systems and Southern Air. Based on staff ratings, the recommendation is to award the contract to Southern Air Incorporated, and the recommended motion is included in your packet.
For the purpose of discussion, I move to award the contract to Southern Air, Inc., to conduct HVAC preventive maintenance and service to five locations within town, and further authorize the town manager to sign all relevant documents. Second. Discussion. Ms. Ricks, you got two proposals?
Yes, sir.
And you care to share with us what the proposals are, cost-wise?
Sure. So, we issued an RFP, so the decision wasn't based solely on cost. They were very close, maybe about $500 difference, but Southern Air rated higher in the other areas that we evaluated.
Based on?
Based on qualifications, we did, we did a rating of six areas, and information received from references from other offer, about the offer, the quality, timeliness of performance on prior projects, that sort of thing, and also their related experience in Virginia and within the town.
Okay.
Question? Question. Preventive maintenance, for how long? Is it a year, two years, five years?
Yeah, we'll work that out. We haven't worked out those details in the contract, but typically it's a year contract with automatic renewals for up to like three or five years.
Thank you. Okay, Krista, we have a motion and a second. Do we? We do, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay.
All right, next I have for you the Chamber of Commerce street closure requests. The chamber is requesting to close the following streets for the Candy Crawl, which is to be held on Tuesday, October 29th, from 4:00 to 9:00 PM, and for Hometown Christmas, from Friday, December 6th, at about 9:00 AM, to Sunday, December 8th, after the parade at approximately 3:00 PM. Southeast Main Street, East Danville Street and South Mecklenburg Avenue, which are included in your report this evening. And the recommended motion is to approve these requests for both events.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to approve the Chamber of Commerce request to close the above-mentioned streets for the Candy Crawl on Tuesday, October 29th, 2024, and Hometown Christmas from Friday, December 6th, 2024, and Sunday, December 7th, 8th, 2024.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
All right, and finally, I have a reappropriation of carryover funds from last fiscal year. In order to fund ongoing capital projects as well as unanticipated facility repairs, staff is requesting that unexpended funds remaining at the end of fiscal year '24, which concluded in June 30th, be reappropriated in the current fiscal year as follows. Streets maintenance, $514,969 for stormwater, sidewalk repairs and paving. Solid waste, $12,276 for truck repairs. Fleet maintenance, $50,533 for vehicle lift repairs. Police department, $18,387 to upfit the new vehicles. Code compliance, $14,130 to supplement the cost of the new truck. Facility Facilities maintenance, $600,000 for repairs and upgrades for HVAC in town hall. Can I get an applause?
Oh, I saw it.
And also the roof. And can I add there, too? That was included in the capital plan, but I feel like, being that we have a new vendor, I'd like to go ahead and take the approach to see about getting that done as soon as possible. And also water sewer fund, $1,136,829 for water and sewer lines and repairs. So the recommended motion is to reappropriate carryover funds totaling $2,347,124 in the current fiscal year.
Mr. Mayor, I move to reappropriate carryover funds totaling $2,347,124 in the current fiscal year.
Second. Discussion?
Thank you, Ms. Ricks, for pointing out the facility maintenance costs. There's the real carryover.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor say aye? Any opposed?
All right. That concludes my reports.
Okay, counsel. The next is the reports to be accepted as presented. Any attachment? Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Okay. Other business, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to reinstate the business development manager administration position for 2024, 2025 budget and re-instate the funds from the general fund balance, effective May 13, 2024.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, Crystal.
Bagan Spoon?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yeah.
Lester?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes. Yes.
You skipped some.
You missed me. That's okay. Yes, I'm saying yes.
You said yes.
He said yes.
Yeah. You missed me. Just saying.
You moved in second, right?
Yes.
You didn't, you didn't have to my vote. Has to be done. Even though I made the motion, it has to be done. Yes.
Okay, yes, okay.
All right. Motion carried. All right. Any other business? I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Crystal and her service to our town and to her service to this council and this interim position. So thank you again, and I want the best for you and your future. But I want to take this opportunity to thank you on behalf of myself and the council. Any other business? Hearing none. Meeting adjourned.